Thank you. Welcome to the March thirteenth, twenty seventeen Board of Selectmen meeting. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
I'll move.
Seconded. I'll also vote to approve. Next, we have two sets of minutes, so I just want to break it down for a second. We have the minutes of the regular session, February twenty seventh, twenty seventeen. We'll take that separately.
I'll move.
Seconded.
All right. And then next, we have minutes of executive session, February sixth.
Motion.
Seconded.
I'll vote in favor that you name. That's good. Okay. Next, we have invitation to speak. Is there someone here who's not on the agenda that would like to speak? Not hearing anyone. I want to just welcome Scout Nathaniel Subcheck, who's here this evening, earning a badge in community citizenship. Okay? So if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Hopefully, we won't have a whole lot of things for you that will drive controversy, but... First, on public hearings, we have Driven Ventures LLC doing business as star car rentals. It's a class-two license.
Good evening. For the record, my name's John Fernandez. I'm an attorney here in Milford. My office is at twelve Main Street. I'm here with Rand Curry on the far-left and John Marshalitis on my near-left. They are the two principals and sole members of the Driven Ventures LLC, which is a LLC set up to operate a rental car business and used car operation, which is going to be located, or actually is today located, at the Acapulco Plaza down on East Main Street, two thirty-one, I believe it is, East Main Street. And it's currently owned and operated by Debbie Atias, who's had it at that location since, I believe, two thousand and thirteen. And previous to that, it had it across the street at the Nathaniel Plaza for a couple of years, moved over because of the additional space that was available in the Acapulco Plaza. Debbie is ready to sell the assets of that business and move on. She and Mosha have a number of operations that they have, different kinds of businesses and rental properties that they own, and they're ready to move out of it. And John and Rand would like to move into it. And so, for purposes of the application before you tonight, this has been before the Planning Board for a recommendation to the Zoning Board, because, as you know, a special permit is required. The Planning Board did recommend unanimously favorable on the permit to the Zoning Board of Appeals and have indicated to us that no site plan and even site plan waiver is required here, because there's absolutely no change in the operation proposed by these gentlemen. So there's no sense, there's no purpose to go back to the Planning Board. The question now comes before you, the permit having been issued. The Zoning Board did act on this favorably the other evening, on Thursday, unanimously favorable to issue the special permit. That was filed with the town clerk today. There is a twenty-day appeal period, which will expire on April third, and therefore, as of April fourth, if no appeal is filed, they will have a certificate of no appeal. We would understand that the issuance of the class-two this evening would be conditioned on that permit becoming final on April fourth, and the class-two not issuing till that time. We will be holding the closing until that is final and the class-two is final, and then we'll go forward and do the transfer. So what we ask of you tonight is the approval of the same kind of a class-two license that Mrs. Atias has had at the location, which is a class-two that is used only in conjunction with the rental business. So what Mrs. Atias ran at that location, or has run and will be run by John and Rand, is a rental automobile business, and they rent used cars. It's a privately-owned family business. And what they've used the class-two license for is simply to be able to go to the auction to buy and sell cars that they use in the business. They can't do that without the class-two license, and it has to issue at a location. So we ask that it be issued at the same location as the rental car business is approved, which is two thirty-one Main Street. She has an office down there in the center of the building, as well as a big area in the back that they can actually bring cars in to store. But they have, as required by the Zoning Board and the Planning Board previously, six assigned spaces for rental vehicles out back and one out front. There's never been a concern about too many vehicles on-site or anything like that. And the class-two we ask you to issue is one where there will be no cars for sale on-site, only rental vehicles on-site. So the class-two is only used in the, for the purposes, as I said, of going to the auction to purchase. Just in terms, so in terms of the two questions that usually are colloquially addressed here, it's proper place and proper person. We know that the operation at this location has been without complaint for several years, and so we would suggest to you it is a proper place. Mr. Curry has an MBA and has been associated with the travel industry and the IT area, but familiar with the entire industry for the last seventeen years. And John has a finance degree and has, in the past, worked for a dealership that also rented vehicles. He has some familiarity there. He's a hobbyist in automobile purchase and sale and repair, John is, and so knows that business well, and has also run his own mortgage business for over twenty years, so he has the business experience. And what they really are doing is putting that sort of auto business and rental travel industry experience together. I think they can run this operation very well. That's really our presentation, and if there are any questions, be happy to answer them.
Before I go to questions for the board, we typically would go out to the department heads and get feedback on allowable use and whatnot. And so, the building commissioner indicates that this is an allowable use. Site plan not required. This is from Town Planner's EBA, special permit required, which you've talked to. Conditions of approval will remain the same, rental car business, plus sale of used motor vehicles with zero vehicles on the site. No outstanding taxes, no outstanding liens. Fire chief and police chief have no concerns. With that, I'll go to my colleagues. Brian, any thoughts or comments, questions?
Yeah, no, no questions. Sounds like a very good operation and wish you guys the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Good luck.
Great, thank you.
No, neither do I. It sounds like the right people putting the right type of business together will wish you a lot of luck.
Guys that want to rent a car, you know where to go.
That's a Kelly Conway-type...
I...
Sales meeting.
You know, I look at it as a public service. You know, too frequently, sometimes we're involved in automobile accidents, need a rental for short term, and it's really nice to, you know, have local businessmen that provide that service. So with that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good night, guys.
Good luck.
Next, we have a request from Imperial Hyundai Corporation for a class-one license. The applicant's here? Okay. We can hold off on that and move on to the parade for celebrate, I'm sorry, parade permit and other permits associated with Celebrate Milford. The folks are here. Everybody here that you want here?
Yep.
Good, good. Welcome.
Thanks a lot.
What a crew.
There's a crew. So we'll let you introduce yourselves to those folks at home that might not know all of you.
Sure. I'm Joe Soares, President of Celebrate Milford.
Terenzio Puccelli, the treasurer.
Paul Pellegrini, happy to help.
Tony Shirelli, board member.
Good. And you have some permits here. I just want to introduce it in this way. Last year, there was a Celebrate Milford event for which I had the opportunity and the pleasure to attend. I was with my, my family and my grandchild. Great event. So are you looking to do the same thing?
Yes, thanks, Bill. It's a very similar idea. We're going to change, like, the location of a couple of things, but basically Kid Zone, the parade to start off the event, starting at ten AM, followed by festivities after that, live music, Beer Garden, and craft vendors, food vendors. We expect a lot of vendors this year. So touch-a-truck area as well for the kids. Yeah, so it's, we think it's, we'll hopefully make it better than last year, if that's possible, but we're going to try.
Okay. It was a great event last year. I thought you did well. It was the first year, right? So well put together. You got the benefit of the weather, which is great. You work, I know you worked hard to check out with the neighbors to make sure that no concerns or issues. I know that goes a long way.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you wanted to explain before I go to the board members?
No, I just, you know, from my perspective, it was a great event last year. We want it to get better, and that's what we're working, working towards. So we made some adjustments, and they're all good adjustments. We're going to open it up a little bit areas-wise, so the vendors are in better spots and our activities are in better spots for the kids. And we expect it to be, you know, we ran it well last year. We expect it better this year, so.
You know, it's when the Portuguese club comes in for their event, they've been doing it for a very long time, and they, they say the same thing. They're talking about iterating, improving each year, making slight adjustments, either with the times or the fact that you learn, right? You learn from your first day, you keep learning.
Right.
So appreciate that.
One thing I do want to mention, we also, we are a nonprofit now, five oh-one C-three. Congrats. Thank you. So all the profits we make at this event will be reinvested back into the town. So, yeah, that's a, that was a big thing, something we wanted to do.
How about this year?
Oh, and this year, we've donated, we've made it donate, we're going to make a donation to the Memorial School Playground.
That's great.
I think five thousand dollars actually towards that. Is it five thousand? I forget how much it was exactly.
We hope to make five thousand.
Yes. So, but we, you know, we hope to do, continue to do things like that going forward.
Hey, anytime you're celebrating this community and helping out people who are working very hard to put new, you know, play equipment in at the schools that gets utilized every day, even on the weekends, you're doing great stuff. So I'll go to the members of the board. Will, I'll go to you this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I certainly don't have any questions. I also got to enjoy it last year with my family. I know I didn't make many of the meetings, but you kept me in the loop via email, and I think that was Kathy, who was, I don't know if she's still involved doing, being the secretary, but...
Oh, yeah, she's working tonight, she couldn't be here, yeah.
But she certainly kept us all in the loop and everything, and obviously, you four are a good representation of the group, and so, good luck. I can't wait to be there again.
Is there going to be a dunk tank this year?
There is. You're invited, absolutely.
I will say, I would like, I would like cleaner water this year.
Yeah. Well, I could run home and get the, the three tanks for that last minute, so I missed the parade, so I didn't...
No, that was due to the hydrant, I think, so. That wasn't your fault.
We're going to truck it in from Millis. It'll be much cleaner, colder but cleaner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
Okay. Brian?
Yes, I will move to nominate Will to be the selectman representative for the dunk tank.
I'll second that.
Glad to do it.
All right, so it's two to one, or unanimous either way.
I'll make it, you did it. It's a vote.
Yeah, no, I think it's almost amazing that, you know, the event went as smooth as it did last year, at least outwardly, I'm sure, you know. Behind the scenes, it might have been a little bit more confusing, but, you know, outwardly it went very smooth, considering it was the first time ever. It was a very large magnitude. I got over there last year after we handled the opening for the youth center, and it was just, you know, a great, great event to be there. You know, I want to thank all of you guys, as well as all of the other volunteers that you have doing this, because putting something together like this is not easy, and it takes a lot of time, and it can be frustrating. But, you know, if last year was any indication, this year will be better. You know, you've done a lot of great work, and it's going to show. And everybody in the community benefits because of your work, so thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Happy to do it.
Appreciate your support, so.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you as well. You know, Brian's right that, you know, a lot of folks will talk about, you know, we should do this or we should do that, but when you folks step up, not only you teaching your children that, you know, when you want to make a change, you do it. Step up, you find out what it takes to do it. So I appreciate it and thank you on behalf of the community. Is there a motion?
Looks like, are we looking for four motions, or?
Yeah.
Do we need a...
Obstruct, one day alcohol, and one day license.
Yeah, well, the only other thing I was thinking about, because the permit to obstruct is specifically for the banner, or is it for closing Walnut Street?
Actually, there's two. One is for the parade permit, I believe. He asked for closing, and the second is for the banner.
Okay.
As I understand it.
I would make a motion, then, to approve all five applications as presented to us.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Lots of luck. I know we'll see you on social media, so we'll keep up to date on days, events, and all that, and hopefully you get the same weather as you did last year.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for.
We ordered that, too, right?
We got your order in, we'll make a motion on that if you want.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Nice job, guys.
Good night, guys.
Thanks. Hey, Pelle, how are you? Good to see you.
See you, Paul.
Good job, thank you. Good job, guys. Good job. Thank you, Andy.
Good luck.
See you later. My pleasure, thank you.
Easy doing stuff like that.
We now know from recent discussion I had with Rick just prior, the Transportation Advisor is not going to be able to make it in to provide that update. There's, we were looking for new information, and it hasn't come from MWRTA, so we'll try to have that in at the next meeting. The only thing I did want to say is recent information, and Rick, if you've received anything different, but we're successful in working with the MWRTA to get that bus route scheduled to stop at the library. If you recall, the library created a petition, and through the hard work of George Clement and library director, they were able to persuade individuals to go advocate, and we did advocate for, for that bus stop. And my understanding is somewhere around the end of this month.
I believe, hopefully around March twentieth next week, a number of the library employees put a petition together, as you know, and worked very hard.
Yeah.
And they really believe in that stop, so.
And so do I. It just makes sense, so. I know there was some logistical issues that they had to overcome. Anytime you change a bus route, it sounds very simple, have it go up the street. It's not always that easy, so, but congratulations to George and Sue for pushing that effort forward and the other folks that had signed that petition. Okay. Next, we have town administrator report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four items tonight. Just an update on the Community Compact, the IT portion of it. I'm pleased to report, we received the first installment of the grant from the Executive Office for Administration and Finance in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to be used to upgrade our website, which will enhance citizen engagement through this, again, the Community Compact. We have now reached out, and we will contract with virtual towns and schools to implement the upgrade. Once the project is complete, we will receive the remainder of the funds in the amount of three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Target date for completion and having the website ready is October of this year. I also want to report on the Chinaw grant, an update. We have submitted our Chinaw grant application, seeking a grant to support the fixed bus route. We expect the grant award announcements are to be made by the end of March, and I will keep the board posted on that. Two other items, one, town hall. Due to the impending blizzard forecast for tomorrow, town hall will be closed, as will the library. I want to remind everyone also, the parking ban will be in effect at midnight tonight and will remain in effect until further notice from the police chief. Also, trash and recycling will be delayed for one day. In conjunction with that, town clerk Amy Nivs has advised me that due to the snowstorm, the original voter registration deadline of Wednesday, March fifteenth, eight PM in the clerk's office, will be extended to Thursday, March sixteenth, eight PM, also in the clerk's office. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rick, for providing that update. Good news on the grants. Hopefully, we'll see, receive good news on the Chinaw grant. I know you've been working closely with Chinaw folks. That money is, certainly goes a long way and helps keeps our costs to the taxpayers down while we're providing services in areas like transportation, or even the Community Compact grant. And the only other thing I wanted to add as it relates to the blizzard, you know, by all accounts, this is purported to be a serious weather event. It's likely that it may go to, you know, twenty-four inches, but even if it's not, the one thing I'd ask is that folks that could take the opportunity to check on their elderly neighbors or check on those individuals who may have medical conditions that may need a little bit of help, and certainly if power goes out, they may need more help. So if they know you're there, maybe that eases the anxiety, and if you reach out to them and they know, it's always a good neighborly thing to do, and I know Milford, Milford citizens have been nothing but neighborly, but I just wanted to throw that out as a reminder. I know the schools are also closed. That just happened to come across social media as well, so it does look like everything's shutting down, even my business shut down. So with that said, any comments related to the town administrator's report? Brian?
No, let me just, you know, commend our public safety departments and the board of health, town administrator for taking such proactive action before this, this impending storm. I'm sure both of you, I got my automated call saying that trash removal is going to be pushed back, that the parking ban's in, in effect, and I know the highway department's ready to go, so, you know, I think Milford really faces these natural situations better than most, and I don't think this one's going to be any different. I think we're prepared on all cylinders.
And along those lines, the community and its taxpayers have put a lot into the emergency shelter, which is the high school. So folks are without power for a long period of time. The generator there has the ability to operate that entire high school facility as its own island, so it'll have power. And if somebody needed to, because of medical condition or otherwise, I know some people are on oxygen, need, need the ability to, to have power for those, that equipment or other equipment, certainly contact the police and fire departments if there's a unique medical concern where power is out. It may be power is out for an extended period of time with these trees, the way they've been snapping, so hopefully that's not the case, but if we check on our neighbors, we'll be in good shape. Will, any comments or thoughts?
No, well, well said for the both of you guys. I echo that, and I'm all set. Thank you, Rick.
Okay. Next, we have under old business, town administrator evaluation. As it, as it turns out, we're not ready for this meeting. It's our first, so we're working through the process of, it's really me working through the process of getting feedback from both members and my colleagues. We'll bundle that all together, so, Rick, if you don't mind, we'll schedule that for the next meeting.
On the agenda, yes.
Don't, don't take that as any indication of anything other than a lot of people doing a lot of hard work, being thoughtful about it, and balancing the rest of the things they have in their life. Any other old business by the members? Brian?
I'm all set, thank you.
Will?
No, thank you.
Okay. Under new business, we have seasonal club licenses to renew for Mass Binoc, Rod and Gun Club, and Sons of Italy Dramatic Sportsman Club, Inc.
I'll be glad to make those motions.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next, we have acceptance of a gift being given to the fire department for a hundred dollars, and this is by Lou Fort.
I'll move to approve.
Seconded.
Very kind of them. I'd also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Any new business by the members?
I don't have any.
Nor do I.
Okay. Next, we have National Grid, a double poll report. Rick, you want to give us the background?
Yeah, yeah. Basically, we're kind of still at fifty-nine double polls. They removed eight. They set nine new ones, but a number of them were to do to motor vehicle accidents, and others were at reliability upgrades, and others were at a customer's request. Again, they continue to work on it. If you look at the actual report itself, they did include the set date, so you can get an idea of the age of some of the polls. Also, you see next to go, which is basically who's on deck to make the next move, so that poll can get further on the road to being removed, so. And also, as you see, the poll number is there up in the upper right-hand corner of the report itself. You'll see the actual polls that were removed, the location, the street, and the poll number. Again, a work in progress. And again, the ones that were removed, the new, I'm sorry, removed are on the right, the new polls added top of the first page on the left, and the reason, you know, we had him add the reason why are we having new polls put up, and you can see there are one, two, three, five motor vehicle accidents that resulted in new polls being installed, and two customer requests, and one just due to the reliability of the lack of reliability of the existing poll.
Okay. Any questions or thoughts, Brian?
No.
Will?
No, thank you.
Yeah, the only comment I had is similar to what I had the last time, and I know they're working on it. I see the age of the polls going down. We've got some that are seven years old, so I'm not sure. Maybe we could, maybe we could get some, some background, so that they know that we're likely to ask about polls that are greater than five years old, you know, and some others in, from two thousand twelve, so five years old. But I noticed the age of the poll has come down in this report since the last time we talked, so they went after some of the age. The reason why, I just want to make sure, if Camp Street is some, there's some unique issue, for example, the two from two thousand ten, seven years old, if there's something unique there, please let us know, because, you know, the reliability of those customers' power and our residents are just as important on Camp Street as they would be in any public way. And, and one last point. I know that they have to prioritize other polls. It's not always age that's going to be the determined deciding factor on where they go. Some, frankly, are at intersections where there's a motor vehicle accident, and two polls are blocking line of sight, so for somebody to be able to see out of an intersection, they may prioritize that as a matter of safety, so I get that. So it's, I'm not trying to be critical.
Okay.
Great job, and while the number grows, it's growing because of motor vehicle accidents and not because National Grid is not trying to get to them. Okay. Next, we have technology manager gave an IT report, and that IT report is intended to give us an update on the types of things that have happened since the last time, the last time Andrew was here. So without going through, you know, the fact is, there's a senior center, work that was done to replace an old outdated software and machine. There was tax collector software updated, Patrona software, is that financial? Do you remember?
No, that is the security-type software that we now have.
Okay, so that works along with the firewall.
Correct.
Make sure we don't get hacked or intrusions. And there's also work being done at the senior center. So there's work being done, senior center, I know there's work being done at the library, I know there's work being done at the Highway Barn, so not only just town hall, but Andy's keeping busy in various buildings within the municipality, making sure that hardware and software are operating. Any questions or comments from the board members?
No, I just want to echo the fact that Andrew's doing a lot of work, and I know that he, him and Daniel are getting a lot done. I just ran into him recently when I was in the building last week, and I was asking him a few questions, and he was just very impressive how on top of stuff he is, so. And obviously, even since his last report, this is a lot of good stuff, especially the Sonic wall, not only is it a new one, but we finally have redundancy as well, and that's important.
Thank you. Do any members have any other items of correspondence?
He had one, Mr. Chairman, there, the Verizon New England. I think I added that in your pocket, packet, excuse me. We received a letter from town council. He is looking for authorization from the board to begin the informal negotiation process with Verizon to renew their license to provide cable services in Milford. Believe it or not, it's a process that has started some three years prior to the actual license expiring. Town council is looking for, again, authorization to begin what they call the informal approach. I believe this was the approach that was taken the last time. It was somewhat arduous, somewhat lengthy, so he is, again, looking for just the authority to allow him to begin the negotiations on behalf of the board, and obviously, he'll keep the board updated. He's also going to be, being assisted by the Milford Community Media Center, Inc. representatives, so it's just time for that process to start again.
Okay. Any comments, questions related to that item of correspondence?
Seems to be past practice.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense, have Jerry, you know, get down with these folks and narrow the issues, and see if there even are any issues.
Yeah, bring them back to us if there are.
It will be brought back to the board, yes.
You know, start that process. A little bit of time goes, goes to twenty nineteen, but, you know, you don't wanna let it sit around too long.
Why don't we just take a motion just to authorize council?
I'll move to, uh, authorize Town Council to initiate, uh, negotiations with Verizon.
Second it.
I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Rick, you had given us an item of correspondence related to town meeting articles, and, uh, specifically the Governor's Modernization Act.
Yeah, um, I didn't bring my copy, but, uh, if I don't feel out of mind. What I was looking to do is, the Modernization Act is gonna allow us to do a couple of things, I think, that we have been looking to do. One, which is the local speed limits and safety zones. If you remember, we have made this request a number of times through DOT, and it politely is...
Denied.
Refused or denied. Uh, this is now gonna allow us to establish a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district, uh, that, as long as it's not a state highway. It also will allow for what they call creation of designated safety zones. And that zone could have a posted speed limit of twenty miles per hour. So, if you recall, there are a couple of roadways, I think we have tried to do this through Mass DOT, and again, we were not, um, successful. So, that is one that, uh, the police chief and I have talked about, and we have put in, uh, articles for the board's consideration to be on the warrant in May. Two others that were, uh, that now the Modernization Act will allow us to do is, one will allow us to, if the board so chooses to deny local licenses and permits to any taxpayer who's neglected or refused to pay, uh, local taxes. Currently, we can't begin collection until there's a delinquent period of at least one year. So, again, it's not something the board has to do, but it will allow the board to do that. The third one involves the establishment of a, what they call a rental revolving fund. Uh, this would allow the town to create a rental revolving fund for proceeds from rental of non-surplus properties, and authorize expenditures without appropriation for upkeep of those properties. One that would come into mind, I mean, Middle School East, uh, if we were to rent that, for example. Purchase Street School would be a second. Again, don't have to, but it now will allow us to do that. Typically, uh, before this, the school was allowed to do it, but in this, the town, uh, aspect would not. So, um, those are three that I just wanted to alert the board to, and then the rest of the memo covered some others. I'll just pick out a couple. One, uh, this board has talked about, uh, a consultant to analyze the role of the IDC to compare it to other, uh, similar towns in Massachusetts. That is one, and then obviously, um, Middle School East will be turned over, uh, to the Board of Selectmen as of, uh, July first. We are going to need, uh, I believe, an article to, uh, allow us to cover costs of maintenance, cover costs of repairs. The other article Town Council is looking at is an RFP, uh, allowing, uh, the authorization of an RFP to seek proposals to lease or sell the property, and then allow the Selectmen to enter into any agreements, um, should they come, enter into, uh, come upon a party who is looking to lease or sell that is acceptable, so. And, um, one other that I, uh, put in is for the Veterans Real Estate Tax Exemption. This one would allow the exemption, uh, to otherwise qualified veterans who have resided in Massachusetts for one year prior to the date of filing. Had a gentleman come in, and we had to say no, because he hadn't been here for a year. It just, the statute does allow for one year, so. Those, again, I just wanted to alert the board, so there wouldn't be a total surprise that there are some articles in there that maybe the board wasn't aware of.
Yeah, we're not, I don't think we're locked in on any of these, so these are some of the ones.
Oh, absolutely not.
So, for example, Middle School East, we talked about, you know, what the current budget holds for, uh, Middle School East, there isn't. We would have to do something for Middle School East. You know, so I wanted to go back to one that I almost found humorous. And it's nice to see the legislators, uh, allow for this in this municipal modernization activity. You know, we had petitioned and talked about slowing down traffic, uh, near Town Park, as an example, and we always ran into roadblocks from the state. So, from Beacon Hill, they were dictating, you know, whether we could have a twenty-five or twenty mile an hour zone, uh, around the, our parks. Not sure where the board was, 'cause frankly, before the board could make a vote, we were prohibited from, uh, I think, I don't think we ever made that vote, but, uh, we were prohibited by the state from doing that. So, it's nice to see that from Beacon Hill and from Boston, some of these things that we wanna do, or may wanna consider as a community to set its own community standards, we're now allowed, allowed to under the new legislation, so, you know, that's where that came from. So, why don't we do this? You know, this is the first time members have seen this list over the last few days. If there's strong feelings, uh, in any one way or another, uh, talk with Rick, get a better understanding, talk with Jerry. For example, Middle School East, while it says, um, that we may seek funds to repair and cover costs operating the building, or leasing or selling, it still requires town meeting approval if we were to disposition, um, land.
Absolutely.
So, so nothing's happening outside of town meeting anyway. But a good list, Rick. I know there are things you have to do, things that, where laws change, and things where circumstances change. I appreciate you putting together this list. This, from my standpoint, you know, looks like you're on top of all the things that are happening around the community, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. That's correspondence, anybody have any other correspondence?
I don't have anything, though.
Will?
Uh, no, thank you.
Well, with the, I was jumping around, I wanted to go back to the license on Imperial Hyundai Corporation. Uh, it's not represented by the, the requestor. There's nothing that prohibits us from talking about it. Why don't we do this? Given that we're here anyway, why don't we look over, I know everybody's had the opportunity to look over the paperwork, but let me ask this, if there's questions that we can give the license holder ahead of time, uh, given they weren't able to make it this evening, why don't we go ahead and do that? If the members have any questions or thoughts, um, that they may need follow-up, we may be able to save serial meetings on this. I don't have any intention to call for a vote, but it...
Well, I mean, I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we have a department head review. Everything is, you know, agreeable to all of the department heads. You know, there was a change of the site plan, which was approved by the planning board on January of twenty seventeen. I think we're all familiar with the area.
Sold vehicles before. Dealership before.
I mean, I, I, I wouldn't have any qualms with making the motion to approve.
Will, any thoughts?
No, actually, I, I feel the same way, and considering the site was already, I mean, my whole life it was a, it was a car dealership, so I certainly don't have a problem, but I can, I can go either way too, whether we want them here, in person, or I could support it.
I, I'm okay with that. The, the benefit, for the benefit of the public, the building commissioner has indicated this is allowable use, and that the building and restrooms are handicapped accessible. The town planners indicated that a change of the site plan approved on January seventeenth. There are no outstanding taxes, uh, there are no outstanding liens. The fire chief, uh, and the police chief have no concerns. So, yeah, what, let's take a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second it.
I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. With that?
One of the best presentations we've had on any license application I can remember, huh?
Well, it's funny, you, you know, you know they know how to run a dealership, obviously, right? So, that was, uh, for the benefit, I didn't, I didn't read it out loud, so I will. It was an application for Imperial Hyundai Corporation. Actually, I did say that. At one fifty-four East Main Street. Okay. That seems to conclude our business for this evening in open session. We do have some items for executive session. We intend to, uh, go into executive session, pending a vote for Town Council to discuss the water company, and what, specifically, uh, the potential acquisition in preparation. We are also going to enter into a discussion regarding the contract for treasurer, and executive session with the police chief related to civil service. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for those stated purposes.
Second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. I'll take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Uh, we will not be returning to open session. Thank you, and good evening. Be safe tomorrow.